The order.
Me here, I can't, it's all of a sudden now, when it started to record, I can't hear it as well.
Same on mine.
Yeah, as well.
Yeah, since it started recording.
Yeah, I can't hear it at all either.
Can you hear now?
Yes.
I hear you, yes.
You can't hear the people in the room. Let me just.
Stan Kelly here.
Judy Nelson, here, Panchalaya.
Here.
Grace Ann Kelly, here.
Here.
Philip Bella.
Here.
Ryan Messinger. Jose Madero.
Here.
Brad Nelson.
Here.
Jeff Colletti.
Here.
Steve Di Lorenzo.
Here.
Daniel McDonald.
Here.
And Scott Watham.
Present. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in his soul, and with liberty, and with justice. Isn't there the symbol that you're supposed to own a wallet? Or give it to the people you're sending into the country.
I need a motion to open to the public for agenda comments, please.
So moved.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Question, it says the presentation will be of the, recorded by environmental commission, is that down already or will be or?
This will be a report out then to the environmental commission with comments. So you give it to the planning board and then you'll? I'm gonna give you the actual presentation and of the draft water quality report with the comments.
Any other comments? Motion closed.
So moved. Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
All right. All right. We have tonight Laura Cool from Muscaton River Association for a presentation. Forward.
Laura was the coordinator, so I'll be giving the presentation, I'm Krista Reeves, I'm the interim executive director and the water quality program manager at Muscaton Watershed Association. And just a little bit of background, in case you don't know who we are, this is a little bit about our mission and our vision and where our watershed lies in your municipality, I know that's a small picture there. But just to let you know where we are, you know, we cover four counties, twenty-six municipalities, and this is part of an effort to go around to each municipality that the Highlands has given us some grant funds for, to talk about water quality. A lot of our work is in planning, outreach, we do dam removals, we also are an NJVEP environmentally certified lab. We do best management practice installations, lots of education and monitoring work. And why are we here tonight? Like I said, we received grant funds to write a watershed management plan, and in addition to that, individual municipal water quality reports. So that plan, I gave two copies in paper form, that will be coming around in electronic form also, and so we're here to just kind of introduce that topic. I know you haven't had a chance to run through it, so there's probably not gonna be a ton of feedback at this point, but we're gonna tell you what our approach was to this and what the work is that we've done behind it, and then seek some feedback, and then also information from the municipality on how we can make this work best for you. We're not looking to add work to you, we're looking to do work for you through the county and through the Highlands Council. So we're just here to best figure out how to do that to get the best results in water quality management. And when I'm talking about water quality, I'm not just talking about the Muscaton River, I'm talking about drinking water, storm water, plus the surface water. You know, a holistic approach here and also wastewater, so addressing all those aspects of water in the community. As it stands right now in the draft report, we have completed our surface water assessments, about half of our storm water assessments. And we're in the midst of starting up our drinking water assessments, you'll see us come through in the next couple of weeks. This building, since it's just inside of the watershed, we'll take water samples from the public bathrooms here, from public, you know, firehouses, from post office, anywhere that has publicly available water. We'll be coming around, taking samples from each municipality in order to incorporate that into our report. We're also chasing storms around, it never rains when we want it to during business hours, usually starts about this time of day when everybody's out of work. So looking for that second perfect storm for us to get out there and assess storm water and get that data in to finalize this with your input. Something we absolutely do need municipal feedback on is where your flood zones are, your flood prone areas. That could be GIS layers, it could just be a simple Excel sheet, it could be a Google map or something like that with, you know, intersections or areas just circled. Something that gives us an idea to start looking at those low line flood prone areas so that we can go and assess them for best management practices. Another area that we would definitely like some of your feedback on is where you are in your MS4 process. And understanding how you're iterating through your watershed improvement plan, the WIP, as they call it, that's due basically the end of this year, beginning of next year. And how your DPW is tackling that, I see them sometimes out, you know, when I'm driving around doing, you know, installations of retrofits on ditches and things like that, but really sitting down and having a conversation with him, Jeff, right? Jeff, and figuring out where he needs the most help, is it getting those detention basin inventoried, is it identifying outfalls and things like that? So just figuring out where he needs the help and where we can fit into that process as well. Let's see. So some of our preliminary findings that are outlined in detail in these reports are, number one is that bacteria is crucial contaminant in all of the water that we've sampled so far. We know that we're a more rural and therefore septic heavy kind of area and that there's a lot of agriculture, so that should really be no surprise. Kind of feels like a given, but how can we get the best return on our investment with best management practices to basically get the bacteria out of the water, intercept it in the storm water, intercept it in the drinking water filtration, is it septic issues getting into the drinking water? So in detail, we've outlined how we know that the E coli is mostly human sourced, we've done genetic testing on the water using microbial source tracking. And a large portion of the fecal matter in the water is coming from human sources, so that leads us to believe since there's no wastewater treatment plant nearby, and we've tested upstream and we've tested all the areas in between, that it is leaky septic systems. And so tackling that wastewater issue, I know it's a third rail for a lot of places, they don't wanna tackle that because it's people's private property, people don't wanna be told what to do, it's expensive, people don't wanna think about it, but we have to start figuring out, you know, small ways, own approaches to start addressing some of the septic issues through, you know, education, maintenance programs, rebate programs perhaps, you know. These are things that we can talk to you about, what you think residents would be more apt to adapt and, you know, willing, willing to work with us on. A number of sites that we've looked at are under a lot of thermal stress. So lots of temperatures creeping up in the water, this is due to a number of issues, but storm water being number one. Number two, not having enough buffer between where the water's entering and coming across the land, that's hitting the pavement, like right now, it's super hot out. That water comes out of the sky and automatically turns eighty, ninety degrees, runs straight into a pipe right out into the river. It's thermally stressing, you know, the aquatic life in there. And that in turn also creates a lot of human health issues when you're thinking about infrastructure, lots of infrastructure decay. So, you know, we're not just talking about the fish being stressed out, we're talking about a lot of stress on infrastructure as well. And another thing that we have found is nutrients and sediment are an issue from non-point sources. So nutrients being things like nitrogen and phosphorus, those are our two top offenders in this region. Some of it is coming from agricultural fields, some from improperly laid lawn fertilizers, some of it coming, once again, as the septic systems, there's that ammonia component. People use detergents and things like that that have phosphorus in them, that comes out in the wash. And then another emerging contaminant of concern I know is PFAS. There has been the PFAS identified sludge dump over on Room Thirty-One while it's not in this watershed. We have been testing private wells in this township and have seen high levels of PFAS as well. That is something that we should further talk about when we talk about septic systems and wastewater. So those, those are our top findings as far as water quality concerns, and we do address things to, you know, help fix those situations. But like I said, I'm not here to tell you what to do, this is more of a discussion than anything else on how we think we can tackle this together. And then, you know, leveraging the funds from, you're getting from the state through MS4 and getting the best return on the investment there. And then other educational programs with homeowners on that front and, you know, basically figuring out where those hotspots are and where you can get the best bang for your buck, we're putting in those best management practices. So like I said, some of the needs from you all, you're, you're the residents, you work in this area, so those known flooding sites. Certain, you know, people's contact info, who are the best people to talk to, right? Like the DPW crew, you know, people that are gonna make decisions on who, what type of MS4 upgrades you make to meet your municipal permanent requirements for that tier A permit. And then drinking water assessments, like I said, we'll be coming through with that next week, I think we pretty much have a handle on sites for that, but just to let you know that we'll be here in and about town doing that over the next couple of weeks. So at that point, I'm gonna stop talking, open it up for questions, like I said, this is just an introductory kind of presentation to the work we've been doing, and I would, at this point, love to hear your feedback and your questions.
Yeah, I have a question, so I'm a little confused with what you mentioned about the PFAS, you said, oh, and we all know about further up Thirty-One and how the elevations are and how we may not be in that hotspot, but then you did say, well, we've tested in town and we have that.
Yes.
So was it a certain area of town that obviously, is it up that section of town where?
Now, I've tested extensively in the neighborhood of Aggar Way, Hogan Court, just up the road here, and pretty much nine out of ten people have above the EPA criteria elements for PFAS.
Wasn't the same sort of something that happened over there?
Yeah, I don't know the source, that's what's making this a little concerning, yeah, because we don't know. We just started reaching out to the community to offer our support and our services and, you know, they all kind of talked to each other in that neighborhood, so everybody kind of jumped on and got their wells tested. And like I said, about nine out of ten, if I had the best guess, the stats on that are showing up pretty high for the species of PFAS called PFOA.
But I think at the school, at the Conley School, that tested very high too.
Yeah, I don't have their data, but is that, that's right near there?
Yeah, Ironbridge Road.
Oh, Ironbridge, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. And that, I think, was because the the guy, one of the guys who was super attentive in this school was also on the fire department, and they used to go out there and.
Do demonstrations. Yeah, so some of these things, it's gonna be that local knowledge, right? Who would have known that that was what happened at that school to cause that particular plume? I have no clue what that neighborhood, is it an old ag field, could there have been some legacy sludge dumping up that way? I don't know that neighborhood.
I think it's the same thing with Aggar, there's actually a water tank for firefighting in that neighborhood, I don't know what makes, it should be self-contained, but it's the only neighborhood in the town that has this tank, and they do service with the fire companies, usually every year do some sort of drill, and then, because they have to service it that way, they drain it and refill.
See, that's good to know, I would have never done that.
Probably fill from area rivers. When they fill that tank.
The other thing too, is that they could be putting some sort of rusted, like that, and underground tanks, that could be causing.
And once again, going back, I hate harping on septic issue, but our own septic systems could also be the source. We're all wearing, I'm assuming some of us are wearing some of the non-stick clothing, I am, like right now, that's containing PFAS. We all have PFAS in and around our homes, that's why the test for PFAS is so strict on standard methods, when you take it. You're not allowed to be wearing anything but pure cotton, you can't have had lunch with a wrapper on, from a fast food place, because those contain PFAS, not moving forward. But some of them are using up old ones that have been discontinued, you have to have one person that has hands that have been cleaned by approved water and soapy, and you can't touch anything else, and the other person hands things to you, it's, it's kind of crazy. But it is rigorous, and we do know that when we are testing, that it is not cross-contamination and/or environmentally caused by somebody's home. Because we do field blanks when we're out there, so we test, you know, we have blank water that we also handle. I mean, it's, it's definitely one of the more rigorous tests as far as water quality is concerned, it's also very expensive. It's like, you know, six hundred bucks to get one PFAS test on, so for a lot of people, it is cost prohibitive to try and test their groundwater. So we understand that as well, and, you know, it's not something that we know that everybody can go out and do, just like when we're talking about septic issues, right? Some people don't wanna know because they don't have the money to fix it if there is something wrong, so I'm definitely sensitive to that. And understand that, you know, some of these things, when we talk about them, are very cost prohibitive, so. I thank you for letting me know about the school and, you know, what's going on as far as the fire tank, or you say it's like an empty, empty fire tank?
It's an empty one, but so, you're talking about dumps landing, right?
Yeah, that, Aggar, the new, when you first, when you go in and you make that first right, before the houses start on the left-hand side, there's like a water hookup, and then it doesn't look like a fire.
Oh, I, okay.
There's, there's another ground, it's big fight fires.
To, to get.
Yeah, yeah, so, yeah, so there's, I don't think it's, I don't know.
There's two tanks, I believe.
Yeah, I think they're both three or four thousand gallons each.
Little bit of outreach to the fire department to see what their standard practice.
Yeah, I've been out there with the drills with them, not, not in the past probably two years, but generally, yeah, they set up the water pools and then pull water from the local streams, so they may be getting something, and so they'll, they'll draft off, yeah, they'll practice and drain it, and then draft back off of those pools to service it each year.
But knowing the cross-contaminating wells in the area, could be, yeah, exactly, so it would take a little bit of source tracking at that point to understand where that was coming from. But, yeah, it's things like that where it's non-point source, right? These are the things that, you know, maybe you can source track and maybe you can't because it's ubiquitous, and you need to focus on the filtration part of it before it gets to the consumer.
You know, think about it, because like that, that, like, I always thought that was pretty inventive in that neighborhood to have a water source for firefighting, but you never thought about the contamination or cross-contamination or service units here where you're getting the water from at that point.
Yeah, exactly.
For your, for your points here, I just made notes, I'll reach out to you, I think Jeff has reached out, but I'll put an email together, including Jeff, our DPW supervisor, and Oliver Grimsdale, our environmental commission chair, and then I'll work with our engineer to get you the flood sites, I think there's only one, maybe two, even based on the new five hundred, you know, the real rules.
Okay, good, good to know.
Do, do septic companies that pump out septic, do they have a requirement to report bad septic systems?
I do not think that there is any kind of law and or ordinance around that. Ben, can our policy guy, I can definitely look that up, but I don't think so. Because I don't think they, if they're not on a maintenance call and or inspection call, I think they're literally just throwing the hose out and they're pumping out the required amount.
Right.
And writing that on the report and then.
So I had a neighbor who thought that our septic system was contaminating their well. And so we called the company out to pump out our tank. And all of them said, at the same time, you can pump out yours and see what's going on there. And all of us find, when they went to pump out theirs, they found out that a tree had grown right through their tank, and it was leaking right away. They never replaced that.
Yeah.
So, but nobody.
Yeah, part of my point, right, like, there's a lot of finger pointing that goes on, or, you know, people don't want, they're in a little bit of denial about what's happening because, you know, at the end of the day, that could be forty thousand dollars if somebody doesn't have, and they're gonna need to take that heat out of their home, and like, that is a that is a humongous ball of stress that I completely understand, and, you know. That's, you know, pumping on a, on a schedule, having, you know, maintenance calls right away is definitely, in my book, a couple of hundred bucks now is way better than forty thousand dollars five years from now when the system is needing a complete and total retrofit or replacement. And at the, at the Young W A, we actually do offer what's called a DIY septic inspection program. So we can set that up with the municipality, we teach homeowners, first of all, what is the septic system, what are the parts of the septic system? What does, what does he do, and then we actually find somebody willing to pump it and. We show people how to identify when there is an issue and it's time to call a professional, how not to get taken in by a professional, because that's a problem too. You know, we don't want people just willingly calling and having, somebody says, it's time to pump, and they're like, oh yeah, it's time to pump, no problem, sure, here's your four hundred dollar bill, right? Because that's actually detrimental too, it's pumping when it doesn't need to be pumped, so, you know, we can offer that program. Oliver's house, actually, so he's right up the road from us, he gave us his septic system, and he found out his septic provider was not doing the job properly, and so he was able to call them up, have the repairing that needed to be made, and then properly have his septic system pumped, so, you know, things like that, you know, even though you spend a little bit of money, probably saved him a retrofit in a couple of years, not having it properly maintained and pumped. But that takes a willingness of a homeowner, letting us onto their property and doing the demonstration. We're also perfectly willing to come ahead of time so that there's no surprises on the day we go and take people to go get the system. But yeah, this is just to empower people so that they understand what's going on under the ground away from them. Can we also alert them to plumbing problems and the pumps to avoid costly repairs there too, so, just something to think about. Yeah, if anybody wants to volunteer their property, we can start coordinating and set that up, for sure.
Pretty inefficient, you guys have questions?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, this, this isn't, is it, I mean, there's gotta be some back and forth here. I'll make a motion to open up the public, you can't open during.
Yeah, yeah, just leave it open.
I'll start with it.
All is in favor?
And so what is the scope of your grant? Is it to educate the public on the material and on the products that cause PFAS, E coli bacterial problem, a chemical problem? Or is it educational, or is it, what is the goal of the grant?
Yeah, fair enough, fair enough.
And whose grant is it?
Right, so, this was a grant for, from the Highlands, two hundred and counties, because they like to work through the municipalities and the counties to, number one, do some education, number two, rate these, do monitoring, fill data gaps where necessary, and then rate municipal water quality reports in a holistic manner that cover all aspects of water. And then three, this is going to ladder up into what's called an EPA nine element plan. And what that does is it's through the Clean Water Act, and once this plan has been approved by the EP, that opens up everybody that's included, all those you know, potential projects and best management practices that we all work on together that I put into that plan, are then eligible for state funding in competitive and non-competitive grant cycles, so that means that just opens you up to a lot of funding for infrastructure improvements, for more MS4 improvements, for some of the things we're talking about, maybe even septic education, you know, going through and installing some of those practices that we're talking about to reduce flooding, to reduce pollution.
And the funding would come through the county?
Well, the funding for the plan comes through the county, the funding for the implementation would come through whoever you chose to write the grant to, there's several funding sources that I do the homework on and figure out which is the best fit for what project. So it could be through a DEP three nineteen grant, which is Clean Water Act fund that has been set up. It could be through the Revolve, State Revolving Fund, it could be through the I-Bank if it's a humongous infrastructure kind of loan project for, I don't know, like a wastewater treatment plant or something that's, you know, we're talking millions of dollars instead of, you know, two hundred thousand dollars or something like that. So it just depends on the scope of the project.
Yes, so, so after you were done with all this, the report and everything, then your report back, the report goes back to the township, and then the township will have, decide to take a grant and do implement some of these?
Exactly.
Just identify, prove right for.
Two D A one, or twenty-four twelve.
Yeah, so the municipal quality, this report just goes to you guys, this is yours, this is your product, this is something we're doing for you and for the county. And we're not only doing it for just the portion of your municipality that's in the watershed, we're doing it for your entire municipality. We know you don't care about just the Muscaton watershed portion of it, right? That's kind of meaningless.
That's, that was actually my next question, a lot of us are in the South Ridge.
Yeah, yeah, so we're doing it for the entire municipality. The monitoring portion is just for the Muscaton watershed, but all of the other work, the GIS work, the flood work, you know, all of that is for your entire municipality. And then when that ladders up to the EPA's approved plan, that thing goes to the state, that's a state-approved plan, and that go, that ladders up. And then it's available for anybody to clash with those funds, if a NGO or the municipality themselves, or a private company in partnership want to work in this area, they can then go for those, they can pull that, it's basically a toolkit. They just go there and they say, all homework's done for us, we have a flooding issue here, or we have a non-point source pollution problem here, and they pull it off the shelf and they say, okay, this area, this funding source, these could be the potential partners, and then they just pick that and go for it, so.
What would that timeframe for that thing?
Well, this is wrapping, this portion of our work will be wrapping up this fall, and then we'll start writing that nine element plan this winter. And it takes about a year, right, and it takes about a year to get approved, so it's not a quick process by the means.
So, I know, I know, I know. So about twenty years ago, this township, as far as education, had a good publication, a little book creation, what a country with a country with a and trying to interpret exactly what you said, educate the community about septic, and it was pretty complete. And the community changes, of course, so I don't know what is.
It's actually, it's on our web, it's on our website.
Is it? Oh.
There is a lot of information on that.
Oh, yeah, I've been through your website, but I have, I definitely have not read, you know.
One, one other, one other question is, there's certain, for example, the school, the school has a large metal roof. And when they paint, the paint used for.
I, yeah, I know that, yeah.
Yes, so how do you educate a whole industry on?
Yeah, that's.
I know what I mean, I, I.
So that's a little bit out of sight of my scope. Love for that to be the case, yeah, well, no, not even that, I just don't think I would have the capacity to do that. I would love for that to be the case, but I think some of this is just an all, you know, prongs approach at the EPA's, you know.
At the end, one solution.
Oh, yeah, I know, I know.
And, 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 yeah.
So, you know, for municipal buildings and, you know, publicly owned properties that can come through the municipality, we can educate the municipality as best as we, you know, possibly can. That's why we wanna talk to you guys and talk to the DPW crew and the people that are actually out there doing the work and doing the implementation, because they know what's going on better than I do, sitting behind a desk reading documents, right? And so that's why I try to get out and talk to as many people as possible, driving around, you know, in the municipality as much as I can, I'm out there monitoring as much as I possibly can, because I, I don't want it to. I'm out there monitoring as much as I possibly can because I, I don't want it to just be a desktop exercise, like that's not my aim. I want it to be real and implementable, like you're saying, paint on a roof, right? It seems silly, but it's a source of PFAS and it's a source of pollution, right? Just like we, you know, we talk about road salts and everybody's like, oh, but we can't compromise, you know, people's safety. Well, there is a give and take there as far as finding that medium, uh that middle ground between when to apply, how to apply. What you're applying versus just blasting everything with as much salt as possible because you're worried about getting sued. So, you know, it's things, conversations like that, um and talking to the people that are actually doing the work. So, like I said, talking with Jeff, one hundred percent, whenever we can set that up, I'm, I'm down for that. Um and, you know, the other side of this is. Relationship with all our ag boards, um we, we share office space with NJRCMD. And we're not here to shame anybody, we just want to offer as much help as possible to those producers who may want to put in best management practices. But can't figure out the funding, we're scared of the funding source, which is completely understandable with what's going on politically right now. You know, um and so, you know, just working with people as best we can and meet them where they are. And understand what people are willing to implement and, and what they understand. So yeah, education, lots of education through a lot of discussions just like this, presentation. Also just going out and working with people and, and seeing what will work best for them, so.
Questions, longstanding questions that, um some of our streams were not properly identified. So they, they end like too soon or, you know, they're not complete.
As far as the EPs?
Yeah, it's like you said, the EP won't check and change, that's something that.
Um, yeah, so I'm, well, I'm a certified wetlands delineator, so partly I can work on the wetlands side of that, that's super helpful. But um doing stream identification is something I would need to talk to the bureau about, uh that handles that. And just see what their hangup is, first of all, like why, right, what's, what's going on there?
Right.
And is there a path, um and, and if so, what is that path and, you know, how do we do that? Because that's been so, a lot of contention for us too. Um we know that, first of all, not all streams are even identified, let alone mapped correctly. Um and so there's waters out there that, you know, are either contributing to sources. Or are great cold water streams and need to be protected and have conservation practices. Cause they might have native rock travel, right, you know, or been contributing to people's well water. So absolutely on all fronts, I a hundred percent agree with you there and that's something um that I will ask about and hope to see for.
What, what have you found basically from your building coming, coming down the Muskinetcom? Um which is old by some township, Mally Station, it's all agriculture. And then the big part of your discussion was the septic systems, then going into Bloomsbury.
Yeah.
Where you have significantly high, higher septic densities that go in the lake, calling the dam. Is there in between, what, what you see there with the stream?
Yes.
A stream that actually proves out?
Yes, yeah, so we've done measured E coli, you know, um i- iterative points along the river. Tributaries, outfalls, that's why we're also measuring stormwater and stormwater outfalls to see what's actually coming from um stormwater. What's coming, you know, from inside the system, because every time it rains, some things just get kicked up, right? And so we wanna be able to parse apart what's actually coming from stormwater, what's already in the system. And then that's where that microbial source tracking and the genetic testing um comes from. Because, you know, like I said, you get that finger pointing and it's like, oh no, it's the people up at the lake. Oh no, it's the, it's the farmer up the street with cows in the stream, oh no, you know, it's your septic system. Um so, you know, with a relative degree of confidence, we can say how much is coming from sheep farmers, cow farmers. Uh human sources, goose, deer, um we've even tested domestic dog um in the area so that we understand that input. Uh we did horse and chicken at one point, um but those didn't come up with anything, so, you know, it's expensive. So we stopped doing that testing, um but yeah, I mean, your top offenders are definitely human. Uh sheep, cow, then goose, um and then cow, and then there's very little deer. Like there was force on one tributary, um so no chicken.
So, any other areas of, of the state? So something similar to Bloomsbury that has a, a very high septic density, is there, is there an answer to this problem?
Yeah, so this is one of our.
Minus, minus putting in a sewage treatment plant.
Minus, so right, that's that zone approach um that I was alluding to. So doing an analysis of those that are gonna be most impacted when storms hit. And then those septic systems are overcome and inundated with stormwater and it becomes a CSO, it's basically raw sewage driven to the waterways, right? Um and so that's why we need feedback from everybody, including Bloomsbury, because we're talking to them as well. Um where those flooding issues are, where those low-line um parcels are. And I mean, there's still cesspools out there, it's not just septic, like this goes back to super old infrastructure. Um and so that zone approach to us is um installing things like septic sitters. Um so just adding to the technology that's already there, maybe finding a cost share program to implement that. Um I have one at my house and it's basically just a couple of uh switches that let you know if one of your tanks is getting too high or overcome. Um and it'll let you go off. And a lot of guns up and, and alert you to the issue, that's like very low level, lower cost. Um and then it goes up to, okay, well, where are the?
We lost your audio.
Yeah, and it froze too.
The video. Power or something.
Yeah, our power's going on and off here.
Yeah, blinked here too for a little bit, I was surprised we were still on the air.
Yeah, and the video froze too. At least on my end.